I'd like to call to order the June 5th meeting of the New Canaan Board of Education. The first item on our agenda is the approval of our May 15th and our June 1st special meeting minutes. You have those before you. If I could get a motion to approve our May 15th regular meeting minutes? Jen, second. Penny, all those in favor? I think you, let's see. Okay, so it's, yeah. Yeah, so we have a majority of those. Okay. And then you'll also see the June 1st special meeting minutes. Could I get a motion to approve those special meeting minutes? Tom, second. Hazel, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Okay. All right. And the next thing is the approval, review and approval of the agenda. I sent an email earlier noting two additions to the agenda, the Governance Subcommittee update and the action item with the renewal of the superintendent's contract. Could I get a motion to approve the amended, the amendments? Sangita, second. Penny, all those in favor? It's unanimous. And then could I get now a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Hazel, second. Jen, all those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Next item on our agenda is comments from the public. To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes will be allotted to each speaker and a maximum of 15 minutes to each subject. Do I have anyone who wishes to address the board this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to reports and recognition. And the first item on our agenda is the recognition of the CAEB student awardees by Dr. Lutze.
Hello and good evening. And good evening to our audience and folks here who have joined us in the meeting tonight. It is wonderful to see so many of you here at the Board of Ed meeting. The, tonight is a great night. It's one of my favorites. I talk about it often. We'll be honoring two very deserving students as our CAEB award winners, which is Connecticut Association of Boards of Education. But before I go into that, I just do want to share with the board and with folks that are here, that you'll see at your table that you have a box of water instead of a bottle of water. Dr. Krenzey and I had a, were, shared a presentation with Cece and Abigail from sixth grade who were working on a project talking about the Saks watershed. They came to central office, they talked with us about the watershed and how to protect the watershed and things we could do. And we talked to them about what can we do as a Board of Education? What are some of the things? And one thing they said was, "Cut down on the use of bottled water. Don't try not to use plastic bottled water. Use boxed water instead." They said that. Boxed water is better. So, we got boxed water. And that's what you have, some of us don't. We have boxed water in front of us. To drink tonight. So, I wanted to thank Cece and Abigail for their thoughtful presentation. They did a wonderful job convincing us of some different things we could do. And I thought the board would be, would like to know why we're drinking boxed water this evening. And it's thanks to the great work of Cece and Abigail over at Saks. So, thank you for indulging me for a moment. Let's begin with our CAEB Student Leadership Awards. The mission of the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, or CAEB, is to assist local and regional boards of ed in providing high-quality education for all Connecticut children through effective leadership. CAEB is passionate about strengthening public education through high-performing transformative local school board and superintendent leadership teams that inspire success for each and every student. The CAEB Student Leadership Awards Program is designed to honor Connecticut high school students who exhibit exemplary leadership skills. One male and one female student from each school in a CAEB member district are eligible to receive the CAEB Student Leadership Award. The leadership skills this prestigious award looks to recognize and honor are a student's willingness to take on challenges, capacity to make difficult decisions, a concern for others, an ability to work with others, a willingness to commit to a project, diplomacy, an ability to understand issues clearly, and the dedication to honor a commitment. A committee of teachers, counselors, and administrators met together to consider the best candidates for this year's CAEB Award. And it became clear that our two award winners tonight best exemplify all that CAEB is looking to honor through the award. I had an opportunity to sit and speak with both of them, as I like to do. And as you'll hear from some of the comments here, they are two very impressive individuals and quite proud to have them as soon-to-be graduates of New Canaan High School. So our first award winner is Michael St. George. Enrolling in our science research program in his sophomore year, Michael spent the past two summers doing research with a renowned cardiologist at the Albert Einstein College of Medicine. This experience has energized Michael to pursue biophysics with a longer-term goal of attending medical school and earning his MD/PhD. He's also spent time the past few summers at the Stowe Running Camp, running over 300 miles and serving as a counselor this past year. In our conversation, I realized that perhaps more than any other sport, you have to train through the summer for the cross-country season in the fall. Michael helped me realize that you can't just jump out and start running and be ready to go. And to Michael and his teammates, running's a competitive and a social experience, where during training, they laugh, they tell stories, they enjoy spending time together. That was eye-opening to me, since when I'm running, I'm typically gasping for breath and stumbling, hoping there's not another hill ahead and praying to get home safely. Mike and his friends, they take great joy in training together. And through the years, some of Michael's strongest friendships have grown from training and competing together with his classmates. When I asked Michael what sparked his love of science, he shared that his teacher, Jessica Zick, inspired him and provided him with great opportunities to learn and grow. He beamed with pride as he told me about the trust Ms. Zick showed for him when she placed him at Albert Einstein doing the work he's been doing. Since other students have worked in the same lab, he explained, and more will do so in the future, he felt it was truly an honor to be selected. Also, he shared that Ms. Zick, he thinks Ms. Zick may be friends with that doctor. And so, he really did feel honored that it was a personal commitment to him when she placed him with her friend. It's been a powerful and fascinating experience for Michael, especially knowing that the work he's doing could save people's lives in the future. Michael also shared that his father has always talked about science and math, which developed in him a deep intellectual curiosity and drive. And thanks to both of his parents, he says, "Science and learning has always been an important part of his life." Now, I asked them about this just earlier, and they had some laughs about it. But they also beamed with pride as we talked about Michael and his great accomplishments here. All who know Michael's academic, all who know Michael admire his academic integrity, his curiosity and love of learning. Since day one, his counselor shared, Michael has challenged himself at the very highest levels. However, what's also impressive is the breadth of his academic interests and his talents, as well as the growth he's exhibited as a leader. Last year, his peers resoundingly selected him as their class president. Michael's humble and inclusive brand of leadership has also earned him the captaincy for cross-country, indoor track, and track teams. Prior to high school, Michael tried many different sports, he told me, but he never really found the right one until he began to run. That first year, he ended up placing third in the regional championships, and he recollected how it transformed him, giving him the opportunity to befriend upperclassmen, learn efforts about motivation and effort, and to gain greater confidence in all of his abilities. In addition to his athletic accomplishments, Michael serves as co-captain of the NCHS mathematics team, is a member of the nationally-ranked Varsity Teams Squad, which stands for Tests of Engineering Aptitude Mathematics and Science, and is vice president in charge of technology for the New Canaan Service League of Boys, SLABS, of which Michael's been an active member for all four years. Michael's excited to be attending Dartmouth in the fall, where his innate curiosity, his drive to learn, and his outgoing friendly personality, along with his passion for everything he does, will undoubtedly lead him to great success. As you can see, Michael's a very impressive young man who has a brilliant future ahead of him. It's my great pleasure and honor to introduce the board to Michael St. George as a winner of this year's CAEB Leadership Award. Michael, come on up. Did I get it right? I didn't even practice. Good. All right. A poised and intellectually curious student, Tessa is highly organized and has a great sense of humor. Her school counselor notes, "Entering high school, Tessa was ready not only for the academic challenges, but also to make her mark in other areas." One example of how Tessa's made her mark at NCHS is with the Wilburn Fellowship Award. This award program fosters the understanding of humanities differences, nationality, religion, or culture. Tessa was the first freshman student ever to complete the application process for the award. And not surprisingly, as a freshman, she won the whole thing. Her proposal centered on women in the workplace. And she's used the award grant to bring in female speakers to discuss this topic with our students ever since. Each semester, Tessa researches and identifies a speaker from a different arena of the business world. Speakers have ranged from a medical researcher to an IT specialist to a financial accountant. Through researching both her speaker's career and their profession, Tessa's prepared with insightful questions that are always aimed to help her audience as they begin their own career searches. This program has been so successful, in fact, she's also started a co-curricular club with the same theme. Like any great leader, she's been focused on creating an outstanding and sustainable program for today and into the future. And I can tell you that Heidi Decosta, who retired last year, was incredibly proud of this program and felt that it truly did provide a transformative experience for our students, as they could see practicing professionals, ask them questions, learn from them. And what a wonderful legacy for Tessa here at the school. Tessa's maintained an enviable record in our most rigorous program of studies. She is wholeheartedly committed to doing her very best in all disciplines, and teachers are thrilled to have her passion, commitment, and curiosity in their classrooms. As they love the discussions, her engagement regularly sparks between her peers. Among her many accomplishments, Tessa's an outstanding Latin student and was awarded cum laude in the National Latin Examination. Passionate about music, she continues to sing in our concert choir, is a member of the state Western Regional Chorus, and is now hoping to join the national group. Furthermore, she participated in several of our musical productions throughout the years. It's unusual for a freshman to be on the varsity golf team. However, not surprisingly, once again, Tessa stood out and made the team. She loves to be outdoors, especially when she's working on perfecting her putting skills. This past summer, one of her goals was to lower her handicap as she played on the local Metropolitan PGA Junior Tour. She was a team captain for her junior year and her senior year. And just the other day, I saw her giving three of her teachers lessons as part of her independent study. She says it was in English. As I thought about it, I thought she was very lucky I didn't have my clubs in the car. She would've had four, four students that day instead. But truly, golf's a very big part of Tessa's life, and she approaches it with the same zeal and passion that she does everything else. Dave Stewart from The Advertiser covering this year's FCAC Golf Championships captured some of that spirit in his recent article. And I'm going to quote from Dave for a bit. "Three years ago as a freshman, Tessa played for a New Canaan Rams girls golf team, which had won just two matches. As she walked up the hill to the 18th green as part of the final group of golfers on Thursday, she was moments away from being crowned an FCAC champion. Riding a fantastic team effort in which three players shot in the 80s, Tessa shot in 87. The New Canaan Rams claimed the 2017 FCAC Girls Golf Championship at Fairchild Wheeler in Fairfield. It was a title which was four years in the making," Dave said, who, for the Rams, "who followed their two-win season with four victories in 2015, 11 in 2016, and 13 with a conference title this season." Now, here's my favorite part of the article. "It's the teamwork and it's the positivity," Tessa said of the Rams' success. "We get along great. It's an awesome group of girls, and we're all supporting each other. Being a supportive teammate is the key. It's been wonderful." Whether in the classroom, on the golf course, or interviewing for women in work, Tessa's positive spirit, belief in herself and those around her, and drive to put her heart and soul into whatever she's doing is inspiring to everyone around her. Tessa's a true leader, one who understands the power of teamwork and positive spirit, and who leads by example in all of she does. The States are coming up tomorrow for Tessa and her team, so let's make sure we all send positive vibes that way. But truly, it's my great privilege and honor to introduce Tessa to the board, Tessa to the board as the 2017 CAEB Leadership Award winner. Now, I'd like to invite the board, just, will you take a moment? And Michael and Tessa, if you could just go around and shake everybody's hand, I think I would like to congratulate you. And we'll take a couple of pictures, if we could? Okay. I drank my boxed water. Everybody. Brian is going to have you in with the individual stamps. Let's first get everybody in. Everybody in. Absolutely. One more group, just individual teams. Very quick. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Thank you. First, we're going to get everybody in. Everybody. Ryan is going to have you in with the individual stamps. Let's first get everybody in. Absolutely. Absolutely. You have, you have, you have, I'm many of these. Just one more group, just individual teams. Come this way, I said, walk. Very quick. This is Russian. They still come with the shirt. The way up, the shoes smell sweet. I don't know. I guess you didn't find archeology. Flash. Excellent. Thank you. Love it. Congratulations. Thanks a lot. See you. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Thank you for like, for the experience. Congratulations. All right. You go, I'm going to go on the other side. Yeah. Okay, I'm pretty ready. Ready? It's three years. Last one. Is that right? Congratulations. All right. Okay. Okay, can I open this because I'm really quiet? Still have a good crowd.
Okay. So, oh, Lord. He's drinking out. Okay. So, the next item on our agenda is the recognition of retiring teachers. And we'll go back to Dr. Lutze.
Yes, thank you so much. This is, as I mentioned, a great night, a celebratory night, a little bit a sad night for us, as we also talk about our retiring teachers. While we are thrilled for them, and we know that for many of our teachers, this is one of the most difficult decisions for them to make. A little sad for us. This year, as we've been talking about through, throughout the budget season, really, but throughout the year, we don't have very many retirees. We only have a few. Which means, I guess, that more people are choosing to stay? Or, I don't know what it means. But there are a few that were, are unable to make it tonight. But I do want to just say a couple of words about them as well, even though they're not here, because it's important. And it's, you know, as you know, I know, the retirees have put so much of their heart and soul into their work, into our school system. In a school, a system, a school is what it is because of the people that are there every day. So, just as a quick thank you. So, I'll begin with Joyce DeDea. And I organize this by people who, by the duration of their stay here in New Canaan. So Joyce will be first. Joyce came to New Canaan High School in 2012, where, from Brookfield High School, where she was the Special Education Department Chair. She was a perfect fit for the department, and she was able to jump right in to support students and collaborate with teachers across the disciplines. During her tenure, Joyce taught at the Learning Center and a variety of English classes also. In a very short time, students were drawn to her classroom for a dose of her kindness, her warmth, and her common sense approach. She'll be sadly missed for her knowledge and her compassion, and for her true love of students. Joyce finds great joy in helping children to do things they thought beyond their grasp, and has partnered with parents and staff to build the knowledge and skills, along with the confidence and pride in her students. I was with Joyce recently, and I asked her about her experience at New Canaan High School. She looked at me and said, "Truly, Brian, I only wish I had spent my whole career here." As a lifetime educator, who's been in a couple of different districts, that really means a lot. And that's who Joyce is. Although she, again, can't be with us tonight, I hope you'll join me in sharing a round of applause for Joyce DeDea in appreciation of her efforts as we wish her well in her retirement. Thank you. In 2002, Dr. Laduke and I met in a stately room at Teachers College, Columbia University, where Tom Sobel, the Christian A. Johnson Professor of Outstanding Professional Practice, it's a mouthful, and the program leader of the Inquiry in Educational Leadership, introduced us to the most inspiring and empowering educational experience of our lives. Ronnie's wealth of knowledge and experience was evident right from the start, as she engaged with the material in both practical and theoretical ways. We soon began carpooling together to and from the program. Actually, she drove to my house and I drove the rest of the way. So she soon became riding with me as I drove to Columbia regularly. But along with other members of our cohort, we bonded as professionals and as friends throughout the experience. Ronnie has a bachelor's degree in Biology and Chemistry from Regis College, a master's degree in General Science from Connecticut, Central Connecticut. And seven years after beginning the program, she earned her doctorate from Teachers College, Columbia University, in organizational leadership. She's certified to teach biology, chemistry, general science, physics, and math. None of those soft sciences. Her content knowledge expertise has proven invaluable at NCHS these past six years. More importantly, however, her kindness and her compassion for others truly define her legacy. As a chemist earlier in her career, it's easy to picture Ronnie puzzling over challenging equations and formulas, working through different concoctions, doing what she would do. As an educational leader, she brought the same intensity of purpose and depth of thought, but she mixed it with a love for helping young people learn about themselves and about the world. Nobody will ever say that Ronnie's a pushover. And her strength flows from her wisdom, that our immense responsibility as educators is never to be taken lightly, that our charge is to help our students to learn about themselves by taking responsibility for their actions, by finding joy and pride in their accomplishments, and by learning to understand themselves and thereby the world. Horace Mann once said, "The public school is the greatest discovery made by man." Every day, Ronnie embodies this promise by bringing all of her impressive skills and talents to the tasks at hand. Looking back on Ronnie's career, it's stirring to consider all that she's accomplished. For instance, while an undergraduate at Regis, Ronnie was an excellent basketball player and played for the team, for the school, the Regis Rangers. Ronnie, as I mentioned, has been a chemist, a science and math teacher, an assistant principal, and a high school principal. And at every stop, she demonstrated poise, professionalism, and skill that impressed those around her and motivated all of us to continually improve. I consider it one of the true blessings in my life to count Ronnie among my friends and my colleagues. And I will certainly miss her in the years ahead. However, I'm also thrilled she'll be able to spend more time with her granddaughter, Mackenzie. And instead of driving over two hours a day, she'll have more time to read, relax, and enjoy herself in the years ahead. My team of interns recently interviewed Ronnie with some questions. And if you don't mind, I'm just going to take a minute to share a little video with you.
I went to graduate school to get my doctor with Dr. Lutze, and he and I worked together in Brookfield. And so, when he came here, there was an opening, and I asked if he minded if I applied, and he said he wouldn't mind at all. I did, and I was selected. I think a pet peeve or a hindrance would be, everything needs to be done in a hurry. That people don't understand that to make good decisions and to have things work out in a way that's optimum for students, sometimes it takes us some time to do some research or investigation or to think things through. And so, that everybody's in a hurry all the time, I think is a pet peeve. I'll absolutely miss the students and the families the most. It has really been delightful working with everyone. I often marvel at how kind and generous students are, even when I have to reprimand them or give them a consequence for their behavior. And I absolutely am going to miss how delightful everyone here is. Well, now that it's out, I can tell you an embarrassing story of how we all dressed up as Hogwarts professors for the senior post-prom party. And we had our pictures taken so that they were going to be out there for all of the 12th graders to see us dressed. And I was Maddie Smith, and I did a great job portraying an 82-year-old. My favorite memory, which will probably be replaced by a new memory on June 21st, my favorite memory was my first graduating class, when the class of 2015, that was my first ninth-grade class, when they graduated. But I think my next favorite memory will be formed, or my most favorite memory will be formed on June 21st, when my next class graduates. Well, I think that this has been an exceptionally inspiring and educational process for me. I've worked with wonderful teachers who are I've worked with wonderful teachers who are very dedicated, families that care tremendously about their children and work very hard for their children, and I've appreciated all the cooperation that I've gotten from my colleagues and from central office, and it's been a great, great, fun six years, and I hate to give it up, but it's time, with a two-hour and 30-minute drive each day, it's time to call it quits.
So it's my great pleasure to congratulate Dr. Laduke as she retires after six years of exemplary service here at the school. To our students, staff, families, and community, she leaves a powerful legacy. We're thankful for all she's taught us, and we wish you best of luck in all that you do in the years ahead. Thanks, Ryan.
You have to come up here, Ronnie. You have to come up here. You don't get off that easily.
She was perfect.
Okay, thank you.
Our next retiree is Francine Gertler from West School. Prior to joining New Canaan in 2007, Francine had served as a speech language pathologist at San Diego Unified School and at BOSI's of Putnam, Northern Westchester. Francine also founded the South Salem Center for Language and Learning and served as its director. So when we hired Francine to work at West 10 years ago, we knew we had a true professional whose knowledge and skills would instantly benefit our youngest students. Additionally, we quickly learned that her passion for helping kids and partnering with families would provide a wonderful environment where all of her children could learn and thrive. Helping students to find their voice is one of the most important things Ms. Gertler has done for our district as an educator and as a colleague. Francine's provided West School's youngest and often most vulnerable preschool and kindergarten students with a gift of speech. Sometimes the gift is disguised as a fairy tale princess holding a tea party, a silly puppet show acting out a social problem, or a custom-designed picture book designed to make the learning authentic and relevant to the child. Francine had a special way of connecting with each student. She exemplifies the true meaning of the word educator, as she brings out the voice in every child. Francine's influence spanned beyond the classroom as well. She was an active member of West's Social Committee and was a key participant and organizer of the West Book Club. She was always quick to help colleagues in need and even hosted an intern this year from NCHS. It's been a very exciting year for Francine personally as well, especially when, in the middle of a blizzard and at the height of a full moon, her first grandson was born two and a half weeks early after 36 hours of labor. I forgot to ask her if we had a snow day that next day. I'm guessing we maybe did. Thankfully, all were healthy and happy, and Francine proudly began a new chapter in her life as a grandma. Francine made lifelong contributions to the student, staff, and parents of West School during her highly successful decade there. We're going to miss her terribly. She'll continue helping others in the years ahead, as she does some work privately as an SLP. Although as part of her plans, I know she intends to work less, to play more, and to spend time in her garden. So please join me in congratulating Francine and wishing her best of luck in the years ahead. It better be. I was hoping. I heard some whispers, I thought, is it not Stephanie? For five years, Stephanie worked as an instructional assistant and substitute teacher before embarking upon her 12-year teaching career at East School as a grade three, four teacher. Of course, I'm talking about Stephanie McHale. As a classroom teacher, she moved across grades three and four, always harnessing the connections across the curriculum units of these grades to ensure students connected learning from one year to the next. Stephanie's a gifted teacher, one who understands her students, knows how to motivate and inspire them, and takes great joy in all of their accomplishments. Stephanie's vast knowledge of instructional strategies, from interactive read-alouds to opinion writing and everything in between, effectively deliver the curriculum while giving her students voice and confidence in their work. The joy she feels as a teacher, and the kindness and compassion she shows her students, create a classroom environment where every child knows he or she is respected and loved. This year, Stephanie inspired her students to recognize ways they could positively impact the world, as they donated money to Heifer International. This was money they had earned by completing chores at home. And through the students' efforts led by Stephanie, they were able to donate two goats and two baskets of hope to a community in need. Stephanie also served as the grade four team leader and as a valuable member of the East Leadership Team, a role that allows her strengths to shine. She's thoughtful and reflective, a wonderful listener, and always calm and even keeled. I have a recent video of Stephanie speaking with my interns as well, and I'm gonna turn.
My name is Stephanie McHale. I've been in the New Canaan District for 17 years. I started out, and this is my second career, I should mention that, I was a registered nurse for my first career, and I started out as an instructional assistant and worked with Helen Hopkins in the Science Department for five years, and then decided to go back and get my master's degree at an older age, so that I could have a homeroom class and teach in a regular classroom. So I've been doing that for almost 12 years. I got lucky. I moved here from Oregon, and I knew somebody who worked here at a school, and there was an opening, and so I applied for it and did not get it. And Bunny Potts called me back when an opening came up as an instructional assistant for Science, and I grabbed it. And it was pure luck, because I had no idea what a great district it was at the time. It's a trick question. I would say the number of meetings that I have to attend that take me out of the classroom, there's a lot of them, and I wish there were less so I can have more time for my kids. I could say the kids, but that would be second. I'm lucky to have five grandkids, so I'll have a lot of time with kids. I'll miss the people. I'll miss the people here at East School, because it's a very, I think remarkable group of staff, and I'll miss that. People work together, they collaborate, they support each other, we laugh when things need a little humor, and for the 17 years I've been here, that's been the underlying thing, I think, boasting a little bit that East School feels very tight as a community. Yeah, that's right, you remember it as a student here. It's nice to know that that came across to the students as well. I like that. It is like home, and that's what I was gonna miss. It's a second home. And people do, and it's nice because students do come back. They'll come back, and I won't recognize them right away because they've grown, but they'll come back, and they'll walk through the halls and say, "Oh, the walls are, the walls are closer in and the ceilings are lower," but they feel like, you know, it's a special place for them. Not that I would share.
No, you don't share?
No. I can't come up with one, because there are so many that happen, and they all, the thing about teaching is everything happens in the moment, and then there's just more of them and more of them, so to come up with one, I can't. I really can't. There's just a lot of memories, and they all roll into a career. I think anybody who is lucky enough to be hired in this district should be grateful, because although it's the only district I've ever taught in, I've talked to a lot of people who have gone to other districts, and I think that the support that we get and trying to be on the cutting edge of things can be stressful at times, but underlying it all, it's just a great place to work, a great place to be educated, and as I said, people are fortunate to have that opportunity. So I think it's unique, based on what I've heard.
So when Gary came in to tell me of Stephanie's retirement, he shared with me, she's outstanding, a real loss for us, a true professional in every sense of the word. Often, career switchers struggle a little bit when they enter our profession, but Stephanie's been a star. I guess those years as a surgical nurse in Oregon prepared you well for what you were going to experience in the elementary classroom. Not only is Stephanie an outstanding teacher, she's also a beautiful singer, regularly sings with community choral groups, and is eager and excited to be spending more time with her grandchildren. She'll be spending quite a bit of time with them at their camp on the Cape in the future. So if you're up there, don't be surprised if you run into Stephanie at the beach, enjoying a movie on a rainy day, or just getting ice cream. Stephanie, congratulations on your 17 successful years at the New Canaan Public Schools. Thank you for your outstanding service, and we wish you all of the very best in what lies ahead. Glenda, don't worry, you're coming up. I got you right here. We were just informed of her retirement, and unfortunately, she's unable to be here tonight, but I do want to take a moment to recognize and thank Gloria Kostner for her service as librarian over at West Elementary School for these past 20 years. At West School, Gloria's been instrumental in ensuring that we continually schedule the best author visits for our students across all of our grade levels. We'll miss her and the great work she's done in conjunction with our reading teachers in different programs, like the Proud to Read Aloud program and other things that she's been a part of, you know, through the years over at West. She's excited that her new book, Little Red Ruthie, will be published this August, and she plans to spend more time with her family, especially her grandchildren, and to do some more writing. She's thinking about volunteering and perhaps working part-time in a school in some capacity. So as you can tell, we just heard of her retirement. I haven't had a chance to do much research, but I did want to just take a moment to thank Gloria for her service to West School and to wish her well in the years ahead. Please join me. I don't know why they're laughing. You look exactly the same. So I've been fortunate in my career to work with an amazing array of talented and dedicated professionals who make me want to be better each day. Having had the chance to get to know Glenda these past few years, I'm proud to count her as one of the most inspiring and talented of the bunch. Not only is Glenda impressively skilled, she brings a joy and a passion to our work that's infectious for students and for her colleagues. At every opportunity, Glenda shares her love of reading with anyone around her, I mean anyone around her. Even, as I know you'll fondly recall, with the Board of Ed on numerous occasions, expanding our canon of great literature. When she began as the East School Librarian 28 years ago, the district knew right away they were hiring someone who loved reading. As her career evolved throughout the years, part-time challenged teacher, reading coordinator, ultimately doing the work now as our Language Arts Reading Coordinator, I believe that's the official title, I'm not sure, Glenda's leadership, vision, passion, and joy became some of the defining elements of our entire elementary reading program. Thanks in large part to Glenda, our elementary reading program is without a doubt a world-class program, and I believe it to be an essential component of our district's overall success. Glenda continued teaching and learning throughout the summers as well, where she, along with colleague and friend Karen Scalzo, organized and ran the highly successful summer enrichment program beginning in 2002. Glenda's husband's also an educator, a retired principal from New Fairfield, and we can all just imagine those dinnertime conversations about reading, phonics, whole language, other topics that frankly only educators love and only some educators love. But through the years, Glenda's stories about Harry the Basset Hound, Bob the Cat, and the other important influences on her life, including her son and daughter, enthralled her colleagues. She tells stories with a twinkle in her eye and a joy in her heart, and as a result, those listening hang on her every word. When Glenda was working directly with children, she was often asked to work with kids who were somewhat reluctant readers. To get them engaged, she would scour magazines to find the most interesting articles to read to and with the kids. What child could resist reading about the Cockroach Hall of Fame? Or learning about the Toy and Action Figure Museum out in Oklahoma? Glenda made these stories so engaging, in fact, that on one occasion, a young boy actually visited the action figure museum with his entire family on a vacation. Without a doubt, Glenda always knew how to teach so that children would learn, which is a gift in and of itself. As the district has learned and grown, Glenda's always been right there, leading us, guiding us, helping us to improve. She's helped us with our assessments, our curriculum, our instruction, taking joy in helping others succeed in the classrooms. Glenda knows the most important work we do every day is to support the instructional core, the work that happens in the classroom between teacher, student, and content. And she loves it most when that content is about reading. And she dedicated her career, all of her passion is put towards helping each and every child in our care to become a skillful and joyful reader, as a young child and as they grow into adolescence and adulthood. We have a video of Glenda as well, so we're gonna take a look.
I am Glenda Green, and I've worked here since 1989. I was working for the State Department of Education in Connecticut, and I wasn't enjoying myself. I missed being in a school district, and I had been running some conferences for the state, and I met some people from New Canaan, and they told me that there was an opening in one of the libraries, and it was at East School, so I applied, and I got the job. Well, for me, it was driving, because I live an hour away, and so it was a two-hour commute for me every day, so that was the biggest annoyance, really. I just found that difficult. Nothing here, though, really, at all. I left school a long time ago, but they fixed that. I remember every student I worked with closely, and I, what did you ask me, would I miss the most? I will, well, right now, I would miss all of the people that I have relationships with, so many friends and colleagues, and it's just everyone. I will miss every single person that I work with, and I do miss my former students, and I think about them a lot. So if any of them see this, I want them to know that I think about them. Tons. One time, I remember a student asked me to get a book. We were in my office right here, and the book was really up high, and so I climbed up on a chair to get the book, and I slipped, and I fell on all these boxes that were lying around, and there were three or four third graders in my office, and I was afraid that they would be really upset, and they were like, "Well, you know, could you get the book, please?" And they didn't even notice. So I got up and got the book. It was fine. They're so funny, yeah, they're great. I did a lot of work with Mrs. Potts, who taught third grade when I started teaching, and we would do a lot of projects together. And one favorite memory I have, she asked me to dress up as if I were Laura Ingalls Wilder. if I were Laura Ingalls Wilder, which I did, and, because I loved Laura Ingalls Wilder and all of her books, and the kids interviewed me, and I was able to answer all their questions because I read all her books so many times. And Mrs. Potts and I just got, you know, we were just amazed because the kids started thinking of me as Laura Ingalls Wilder, who was probably at least a hundred years old, or more, or would have been at the time. So, it was, it was, it was fun. And Mr. Reschar, our principal, was observing, and we were all just stunned that the kids were so into that interview, so that was, that was really fun.
Did you dress up to interview them? Like, was it just a, do you remember what it was for, or was it just like an interview?
They had read, they had just read one of her books, and they were very interested in her as an author, and she wasn't alive at the time, so they decided that they needed to create some sort of experience so that they would really, you know, kind of find out more about her. So, it was pretty great. I, I've had so, such a great time here. Now, see, I'm going to tear up now, but anyway, I've worked with the best people you can ever imagine. I've found the parents who volunteered their time when I was a librarian and are, are still very present with our reading program. The Board of Ed has always been so supportive. I just, it's been a great work experience. The rest of my family is, and extended family is so jealous because I have never once, this is serious, I sound like Pollyanna, but I've never complained about work, ever, because I loved coming here. And I still remember the first reading class I ever had in school. I remember every single student in that class, and they would be thirty-eight now, so, but I remember them so well. It was such a great experience for me and every other student I had since then. And then the teachers have been great partners, and it's, it's just been wonderful.
As you can see, Glenda has a way of talking to children, staff, parents, about books that inspires everyone to pick up and read. When you take such a high degree of knowledge and skill and mix it in with the joy and the unquenchable passion for teaching, you get a person whose legacy will last with students and colleagues here in New Canaan for years to come. So, please join me in thanking Glenda for all that she's done for the children, staff of New Canaan, and wishing her the very best of everything in the years ahead. We're going to miss you.
I just need to say a quick, just a quick word for her. They're all laughing at me. Well, I don't have a book, and, you know, I was laughing because you quoted Horace Mann. I need to quote Winnie the Pooh, of course. And, and the quote that I just love is where Pooh says, "How lucky I am to have something that makes saying goodbye so hard." And that's the way I feel. And I wanted to thank the Board directly, because over the years, you and your predecessors have made our reading program what it is because of your support. And I don't just mean, you know, letting us buy materials. I mean, real support. You believed in us, and whenever I would come and, and we would tell you about our program, your questions were always so good, and we just felt, and I know the other coordinators feel this way, too. Thank you so much. You have been amazing, and you are the reason that all these good things happen. So, thank you all very much. I will miss all of you. Thank you.
We should have asked more questions.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So fun, so fun. Thank you. I feel like I really know you. So, thank you.
Wait, wait, wait. You can't go without your guest.
Oh, thank you. Wow. Oh, my gosh. Thank you. I don't know. I can't, but it's been a while, right? Thank you so much. Thank you.
So, Glenda's twenty-eight years are impressive. We have one more retiree who wasn't able to join us tonight, who I just want to take a moment to thank, who has, who spent thirty-eight years with the New Canaan Public Schools. Over his tenure, Joe Totola's taught a variety of classes, including Learning Center, Careers, U.S. History, and Survive. He's often been described as the heart and soul of the Special Ed Department here at the high school. No matter the circumstance, Joe always went above and beyond to support students and staff. Whenever the department was faced with a student that seemed to need a little more positive support, "Put him with Joe, he'll be able to reach him," was the common refrain. And time and again, Joe was able to reach him and help to make a difference in that student's world. His love for working with kids was also evident outside of the classroom. Joe dedicated countless Saturday mornings working with students at the Sports Buddies Program, helping them, some of our needy students, to develop social skills and lifetime fitness routines. In addition to his outstanding work in the classroom, Joe has also been a very respected assistant football coach here for the Rams. He served as the Rams Defensive Coordinator from ninety-five until 2010, where he is well-known across the state for his schemes and his motivational strategies. Joe dedicated thirty-one years to coaching Rams football and thirty-eight years to teaching in our classrooms. He was an outstanding coach and teacher. More importantly, he's a mentor for our young students. He was a model of the character and integrity we all hope our students develop, and he'll be sorely missed by the students and faculty alike. With heartfelt gratitude, we thank Joe for his outstanding service here at the New Canaan High School and New Canaan Public Schools and wish him well in the years ahead. Thank you, Joe. And with that, I just want to say just one more time, thank you to the retirees for their outstanding service to the students, the parents, the entire New Canaan community. As I said in the very beginning, a school is what it is because of the people that are inside those four walls, and we have some great ones, and some great ones are retiring from us this year. But we thank them for all the work they've done with our students, and as you've probably heard as a theme, you know, these retirees work beyond their classroom to help their colleagues to grow, to learn, to succeed with kids, and to build those positive legacies that mean just so much for us in the work that we do. So, if you don't mind, join me one more time to just say thank you to all of our retirees and wish them well. We're going to miss you. Now, you're probably a little tired, so we won't be offended if you go home. Heather, before you begin, if you...
Sure.
Sorry.
Thank you.
No, I was just going to say...
I'm sorry.
No, that's all right. That's quite all right.
I like it. You're eager.
So, the next item on our agenda is the Senior Internship Update with Ms. Bianco and Ms. Carol.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. My name is Heather Bianco, and as you know, I started in January as a Senior Internship Coordinator. My background has been in the corporate media world for nineteen years, which has been a very technical, paper-free environment the last eight years. That being said, I had to laugh when Sue Carroll handed me a red binder on my first day with an enormous amount of paper poking out. I thought, what is this? Then, when she told me she had forty more of these binders with all the necessary documents for each student, meticulously alphabetized, I was an amazement of how much dedication and time Sue has spent in the SIP program the past seven years. I think we all should commend Sue on her dedication with the SIP program. Now, for some information regarding this year. We had two-hundred-and-sixty-nine members of the class of 2017 go out on their internships on May sixteenth. This is over a hundred more students than the program had last year. Here are some interesting statistics for this year. We have a hundred-and-ninety-one unique sites that our two-hundred-and-sixty-nine students are placed in. We have seventy-four mentors that are faculty, staff, and committee members. We have grown from twelve students to two-hundred-and-sixty-nine students in seven years. Let's take a look at the chart to see our growth. I think you all have the chart as well. See, that chart speaks for itself. We have over forty categories of different types of internships. Just the next chart. Next chart. There you go. Got it. Our leading internship placements are nonprofits, New Canaan Schools, marketing, finance, and environmental science. Some of our new sites this year are Grace Farms, which have areas of interest in organic farming, building wildlife habitat, Justice Initiative, and marketing. We have Axel Video, which is a software company, video software, the Nantucket Project, and La Crosse Miller Sports Program. This year, we also have students working in various offices and town hall, such as planning and zoning and public works. We also have three interns working on creating a new website for the SIP program. We can look forward to a fresh new site with short videos of our interns talking about their experience at their internship locations, and we'll present that video at the SIP reception. As in past years, the process has been the same. Applications were available in December. Based on feedback, the process was reduced this year to one week compared to four weeks. That being said, the one-week application time period did not hurt our outcome of interns. In fact, the tighter schedule surprisingly produced no late applications. Interviews were conducted in January. All students were interviewed by at least two committee members. Based on the interest stated in their applications in each student's interview, we matched students in February to the internship sites. In preparation, in preparation for the internship experience, all SIP students were required to attend Career Night and go through a series of training exercises in April. The training was successful, even with two-hundred-and-sixty-nine students to train. We broke the group into two sessions of approximately a hundred-and-thirty-five students per session. In each session, a team leader trained ten to twelve students. Team leader, team leaders were members of the SIP committees, school counselors, and other staff members who had served as mentors in the past. And you have an outline there of everything we went through, but we covered workplace etiquette, dress code, proper use of email, managing relationships and communication with colleagues and superiors, confidentiality of work product, employee social media, and all types of pre-internship information. So, you can take a look at the outline. The day before internships began, all seniors attended an assembly with Ben Carpenter, the author of the book, The Bigs, which addresses career exploration and the basics of being successful in your career. Interns are required to maintain a reflective journal about their experience and what they are learning about themselves as workers. The first two journal entries, journal questions were based upon Carpenter's book. The feedback we received from the students had been positive concerning the book. Students feel the information is very helpful. When I started in January, I thought, this is going to be a nearly impossible to manage the particulars of placing and communicating with interns, mentors, host sites, facilitate journals, time sheets, and questions without the use of management software. Luckily, we were able to purchase the student internship software in early May, just in time to start of the SIP internship journals. The software has been effectively used in other local high schools, such as Greenwich, Ridgefield, Fairfield-Ludlow, Weston, and Stanford. I'm very pleased with the software. It has been a tremendous help in managing our program. I have also been very impressed with the SIP committee, not only has the committee interviewed two-hundred-and-eighty students in January, but also they've been a huge help in getting new sites for this year. Out of the two-hundred-and-sixty-nine students we have this year, approximately thirty students are in student-designed sites. This means we have placed approximately two-hundred-and-thirty students in our own solicited sites. In fact, we had more sites than we ended up needing this year, which was a surprise to all of us, which was fantastic. Tomorrow, June sixth, we have a LinkedIn training, and we, again, will break the students into two sessions and only place ten to eleven students per table. Even though there is one speaker, we will have committee members present at each table to facilitate the training session. As a newcomer to New Canaan High School, every day, I'm amazed not only with our dedicated, hard-working students, but also with community support of our program. For next year, we can only assume every senior will participate in the program, and we look to the community and committee members to find new sites for the SIP program. Thank you for the opportunity to share our program with you tonight. Our SIP reception, in which we recognize all our interns, their, their site supervisors and mentors, and mentors will be in the high school auditorium, June nineteenth, at five o'clock. We look forward to seeing you there. Sue Carroll is going to speak. We're also running some speakers and curriculum for the non-SIP seniors, so she's just going to speak about that.
Thanks, Heather. What a great night to be here. Glenda Green taught my daughter Molly, and she was during the Laura Ingalls Wilder days. So, I remember it well. I remember it well. When I spoke to you last spring to report on the Senior Internship Program and its great success, you queried me about what happens to the students left behind. I want you to know that you were heard, and that we have put into place a few things to support career exploration with a nod towards what the interns are experiencing during the five weeks of the internship. All students, not just interns, as Heather mentioned, attended assembly on May fifteenth, where the author, Ben Carpenter, spoke about finding your career path, setting goals, and making the most out of the campus career centers as students will matriculate next year. Each student was given a copy of this book called The Bigs, which refers to entering the big leagues of the world of work. And this book was purchased with the good grace of the New Canaan High School PFA, and we're very happy. Every student got a copy of this book. Mr. Carpenter believes that instead of doing a good job, why not strive to do an extraordinary job? He believes that young workers should be there before their boss and leave way after their boss. And in fact, we had Nate Chekets here today talking to the remaining seniors, and when we asked Nate what kind of people he hires, he said, "First in the office, last to leave the office." So, we're trying to continue this message to the students. We've been building on the information shared by Mr. Carpenter with the students who are not interning. There are sixty such students who, for various reasons, did not participate in the Senior Internship Program. Eighty percent of the sixty students are boys, and Heather and I have asked some folks to come and speak to the seniors during an hour-long informational discussion about their chosen career paths. You don't necessarily need a college degree for any of the careers that are being presented, although all the speakers stress that one's education should never stop. Most of our guest speakers are also hosting interns at their places of work. The job areas represented include a personal trainer, a restaurateur, an entrepreneur, a race car driver, and a real estate agent, who will also discuss with the students tips on finding your first apartment. Most of these areas of career interest were not offered during Career Night this year, which was another reason why we spread a wide net. And the students attending these career explorations have been very informative. We are following up these chats with two, two-period workshops in the College and Career Center on resume writing, interviewing skills, wardrobeing for work, and we'll end the workshops with the attendees opening, opening LinkedIn accounts as their intern counterparts will do tomorrow. Certainly, if there is a need to build on this model next year, we will. But I think Heather is doing such an amazingly wonderful job that perhaps all three-hundred-and-nine members of the class of 2008 will be out on internships. We shall see. And we're happy to answer any of your questions, if you have any.
Thank you very much. I'll open it up to the board. Penny?
So, you all had talked really about the problems of scaling, and you were able to scale this up, this program up exponentially, and I'm just wondering sort of how you did it, or what lessons there are there for us to know, because the rollout is extremely impressive.
I, I think, I think we were really patient, which was hard. If you, you've known me for a long time, Penny. It's hard for me to, I operate on impatience. And so, I think the fact that we used a committee, that we sought... And so I think the fact that we used a committee, that we sought wide-reaching support in the community, that we were able to lay a very strong foundation so that when we saw the need to hire its own coordinator, it had a good underpitting. And I think Heather feels that it has a good underpitting. I think she was a little skeptical about the committee mode at first, but now recognizes, you know, that really it's a force to be reckoned with. So I think slow growth was our friend in the end, and I think the sky is the limit at this point.
Can I just share, not many people would call going from twelve to two-hundred-and-seventy in seven years, slow growth? So you're...
Well, again, I, you know, chopping at the bit, so, yeah.
So I want to commend you for that.
Thank you.
Because it has not, to you, it might have seemed slow, but to the rest of us, as Penny said, it seems exponential. And it is so impressive that you've kept up with the need.
Sangita?
I just have to say it again, too. I mean, this program is phenomenal. I know when my sons went through it, and it's continuing to grow, and kudos to everyone who's, you know, with the success of it all. I was just wondering, since you did have a big increase from last year in terms of the number of sites, what was your most successful strategy in terms of going from even, you know, to the two-hundred? Because I know if we're going up to three-hundred, is that going to be the same strategy we're going to use to try to get more sites to cover? And I know you had more sites now than you needed, but I was just curious, like, how did you manage that? Because that's a...
I think, Sangita, that it's simply the fact that for the...
Can you take a mic, Sue?
Oh, sorry. For the current senior class, there has always been an internship program. And it, one-hundred-and-sixty was a lot of kids last year. It was a small, it was a class of only two-hundred-and-eighty kids. So I think that the chatter was great based on every previous year. And I think that there really, kids did not want to miss the opportunity. So, and I think the fact that what really helps us is that we will help them get the internship. You know, thirty is not really that many kids to build their own internships. They had that option, but they're nervous about it, and they really don't know how to even navigate it. And we want it to be meaningful, so to be able to go out, and Heather came with amazing resources in her corporate background, so she was another, another layer of wonderfulness. And, and so I think that really it was the chatter in the building. So I can't imagine that we're not going to hit three-hundred next year.
I'm Ari Rothman. I have the pleasure of being the administrator who stands behind the layers of wonderful. There's unnecessary modesty here. There was an enormous amount of beating the bushes. There was a granular study of areas that students had expressed interest in, and there weren't sites in the past. So it was a lot of very targeted networking and building a foundation, and it really, really was labor-intensive, primarily Heather and the committee.
Thank you for all that work.
Have other questions? I have a question. So how did you, could you give a little bit of information about the mentors, how they were selected, what, you know, I don't know how that part of the program works?
So what we've done is, when we had all the students with the sites, you know, this is probably in March, you know, a lot of faculty members like to look, you know, a lot of them are comfortable with certain students. So we sent out the list of students, and the faculty members would choose the students they're comfortable with. Some don't care, you know? So we go through that list, and everything, everyone that was left, it sounds horrible, everyone that was left over, I would actually just place them with faculty members, you know, a faculty that said, I'll take six, I'll take eight. And then from there, we would go to the committee members. And then obviously, you know, the principals, assistant principals, myself, Sue, and that's how we, you know, we handled it.
Okay. And if you could just give a little bit of background on the role of the mentor, what are...
Oh, absolutely. So the mentor is to actually either go to the site the student is going to intern at or at least minimally call the site. So they, you know, familiarize themselves with it, meet with the student prior to the internship if they don't know the student. Even if they do know the student, they should meet with the student. And then they read their journal entries and respond every week.
Okay.
Yep. Did I miss anything?
Nope.
Okay.
Hazel?
First, just to say thank you for such a wonderful program for the kids. I've heard them talk about it, and just, and they, I listen and just in awe, so just thank you for what you've done and all the work. Is there anything that we can do? I know that I ripped out articles of things, and sometimes it would work out that they weren't quite appropriate or something. Is there anything that we can do?
No, I think just next year, you know, again, the community was tremendous. Get the word out. I think we'll probably need some more sites next year, so whatever anyone can do, you know, networking is great, you know? If you know someone, that knows someone, I mean, you know, there's places that I really would have liked to seen us get in, like, you know, I was trying to get into Chelsea Peers, and I was trying to find someone that I knew that knew someone to get in, because that's a huge sports complex, and a lot of these students want sports management. I had at least five or six, and I couldn't really get a pla, you know, we did place one with the athletics department here, but that's something that I really would like to get into next year. So if anyone knows anyone at Chelsea Peers, that would be great.
Sangita?
I know since you had, I'm not sure how you collate all information that you get from the journals and such, but was there some general things, things that you were expecting, unexpected, that the students felt like they really got out of the program that you could share a little bit?
Not yet. I mean, we're still in the midst of it. All the journals are in the new software, which is fantastic. I think I'll probably have an answer for that once we get to the end, and I can kind of see how everything pans out. Unless, unless, Sue, you have a...
No, I just was going to say, we were just talking about how many kids were getting summer jobs out of the internship, and that's an extra added bonus, so... Yeah. And we're hearing a lot, I don't know if, I try to enhance the social media of the school as much as I can, but there's a lot of buzz out there. The interns are literally everywhere. And, and I think, I think our, we had an intern from the advertiser here earlier. I think the amount of stories that the interns are writing about the internship program is extraordinary, so we don't have to worry about press. So it'll be interesting to see when, as Heather mentioned, when we poll them. But so far, great enthusiasm. I, we, Heather hasn't had too many grumps, so that's, that's pretty good.
Maria?
I just, I do want to say thank you. I think it's really awesome. My daughter has an internship, and it's turning out really positively. And what I'm seeing is that everyone is sharing, it's, I think people are trying to one-up the next intern, and they're giving them little mini field trips, and my daughter actually went to court, which was really, you know, great exposure. I did have, I don't know if you do a survey at the end, but I would really suggest, including parents, to get pros and cons of how it went, but also maybe you'll get some more, you know, sites out of having parents involved in the surveys. But thank you, it's really cool.
Anyone else?
If I can just say one, one quick thing, just while I have a chance. The, I'm so pleased to hear and so impressed by the program that you also have in place for those seniors who are not on the internship. I do think that's a very important piece. And we focused so many, so many years on building the internship program. But there are some students, like Tessa, who is here tonight, who chose not to go out of the internship because she has golf and other things that, you know, that she's doing, so she wasn't able to. So when I asked her and her parents about the experience she's having in school, she says it's outstanding. And that's a credit to you, Sue, and certainly you, Heather, as well, and to the teachers that are still working hard to make meaningful experiences happen for our kids that are here. As a matter of fact, she told me she has a math test on Friday. So they're still working, moving ahead, doing their things. And that, that's important when you're talking about such a significant percentage being out of the building. So thank you for coordinating all of that. That, as we went to scale, that was one of those questions that we didn't want an unanticipated consequence here. We wanted to plan that out and make sure it was purposeful, and you did. So thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to add my thanks and congratulations. I also have an intern, and it's interesting, I mean, they're even meeting kids in their internships from other districts. I mean, my daughter's in an, in an internship with another, with a student from another district, so it's great. And she's learning some of the finer points of, you know, paper shredding and, and, you know, things that sometimes, you know, we have to learn about our first jobs, that not everything's glamorous. So I think it's, it's interesting, so.
Just this morning, Nate Chekets, again, who's an entrepreneur and went to New Canaan High School, was talking about his college internships and how one was nothing but Excel spreadsheets, the next was nothing but PowerPoints. We put our time in, and later on, the benefits are great, and we get to watch then younger people putting their time in, so it's a full-circle moment. So I'm glad that she's at least doing, doing something.
Okay. Well, thank you again.
My pleasure.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Penny, I'm sorry.
One more, just to invite you back at a future date after you've gone through all the data and sort of sorted out your, your final thoughts about what, how this, this particular internship went this year and what you're looking for for next year, if there's more to share with the board. We're, it's a fledgling program that's now huge, but we're still very interested in it from the perspective of all the students who are out there and the ones who are here. So thank you.
And can you plug the reception one more time?
Yeah, the night, night's at five o'clock.
Very good.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you.
All right. So the next item on our agenda is the budget review with Dr. Keating.
Thank you. Well, it's very difficult to follow those three great presentations, honestly. They were so uplifting, and now we get to talk about budget. So we're here tonight...
Can't cut the intern program.
We can't cut the intern program. We don't want to cut anything. Unfortunately, we have to do a little work here on this. So what you have before you tonight are our recommendations for FY two thousand and eighteen budget reductions. As you know, we were required to cut one million dollars from our budget after the process went through the town boards. Half of that, five hundred thousand of that, we basically had provided that to the boards as they were deliberating, because we were experiencing some very positive claims in our internal services fund for our health, employee health benefits. So that was a given at the time that was going to be a reduction. Since then, though, we've had another five hundred thousand dollar reduction, which makes up the total one million. Over the past few months, we have a meeting with our administrative council, the cabinet, the Board of Education Resources Committee, and we've spent a lot of time being very thoughtful in terms of what we thought was appropriate to bring before the boards. And at the same time, we had a few, two, I think, more significant things going on that we wanted to get results on. One of them was a collaborative bid with the town for stop-loss insurance, which we just received the presentation last week, and that resulted in a nice, significant savings for us. And then secondly, we wanted to wait on more retirement notices, which we have received a few. So those two items alone are going to help us manage the other five hundred thousand dollars. So I'm going to go through them. If you have any questions, please feel free to stop me. So the first item is the Internal Services Fund. We talked about the five hundred thousand. The stop loss, the actual savings on the stop loss is two-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand, but we have to pay two months, July and August, at the old rate, because our plan year starts September first. So those two months, we had to absorb in those savings. So the total out of Internal Services Fund is six ninety-two, six thirty-five. I've included on the right-hand column the original budget or the request, so that you have some comparisons. We looked at the twenty-three maintenance projects that we put in the budget for this year, and we feel that we can either accelerate those purchases into this current year as we get into year-end. If there are funds available and we're able to take care of those projects, we're going to accelerate them. If we can't accelerate everything, we'll defer them into next year, towards the end of the year, with any potential funds left, left over. That's one-hundred-and-fifteen thousand, sixty-two dollars.
Joanne, do you recall the dollar amount that we, we used to accelerate last year as far as capital projects?
Last year, we actually only did one major purchase, and that was the decision not to roll the equipment that we purchased for a central office into the lease. Rather, we had funding available at year-end, and it was a little over a hundred thousand dollars. It was a hundred and twenty at the end, when we got everything.
Like, okay, perfect.
And can we say, can we have our presentation? And then we can ask questions after she's done.
She had asked, asked in a row. Okay.
I did ask, if you have any questions, just interrupt me.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, I missed it. Sorry.
Thanks.
Anyhow, so which ones do you think we might need to defer? Accelerating, obviously, is not an issue, but deferring, what are the ones you were looking at?
You know, they're all small projects. There are twenty-three projects, all under ten thousand. They are listed in priority order in our book. So we would start with the most significant issues that we have and go down. Anything that's operationally related to the mechanical systems, we'll go for first. And then there's some cabinetry and some items that are more carpentry-type of things that would be deferred to the later list. But we're hoping to get as many of them as we can completed this year. Turnover savings, we're adding ninety-five thousand to the hundred, so it would be a total of one-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand. Number four relates to a retirement we had with a TA. We're going to try to configure the services that that person provided differently with the existing staff and, and take that as a reduction. As we go through the year, if we find that we can't, we're going to have to look at some other options, possibly bringing the position back. But right now, with the support of the technology department, we feel that we do have an opportunity to absorb that work. We're suggesting that we defer the hiring of the custodian at Saks by three months. It was in the budget for a full-year hire as of July first. Number seven, or I'm sorry, number six. We had a termination of an employee at the high school, a custodian, this year. It occurred in April. We replaced the employee in May. And so when that person came in, they came in at eighty percent of the salary. It was budgeted at a hundred percent. First year on custodians is at eighty percent. So that's a true savings that we have in the budget. We are suggesting that we eliminate the dual, the single taxpayer ID with the town and have our own taxpayer ID. This will eliminate the need to go through ADP to file joint taxes with the federal government and the state government. And we have absolute capability to do it with Munis, it's not a problem. So, and it's not really a problem to have a separate taxpayer ID. It's best to do it as of January first, because that's obviously your W-two season and whatnot. So we're recommending doing that. And then finally, we are already in the process of changing our cell phone carrier from Verizon to T-Mobile. The pricing was excellent. We're hoping that the coverage is just as excellent, but we'll be, we'll find out more about that during the year. If it doesn't work out, we would have to revert back to Verizon, but they've given us a lot of assurance that they have at least equal, if not better, coverage. So we're, we're going to find out.
And as a school district, we can switch. We don't sign into a long-term contract, so if something goes wrong, that's something we can, we can switch if we must. It's not like your home contract the way you lock in for years.
Right. We don't have a contract. The other nice part about this particular conversion is we didn't have to replace all the equipment. We didn't really replace any equipment, just the cards. So we didn't have an upfront cost on equipment, which was really nice.
So the custodian at Saks, when is that person, then, would they come in, like, in October?
Yeah, they'd come in October first.
So that's just, okay. I mean, I know with additional space, they're really going to need that, but...
One thing to notice is that we're not actually turning over the full addition, the renovations in the, around the auditorium until November. So we will have the new addition, but we'll have some space around the music room offline, around the auditorium during the fall.
And as far as, like, cleaning crews, like, will the custodians do, like, the cleaning after the construction before the kids come? Or is that...
No, no, that's all, that's all taken care of in the construction. We have a final clean that they do, and then we turn it over. Brand spanking clean.
Can't wait.
So all of that really led us to believe that we could get away without the custodian for those three months, and we'll have the person ready to come on for October first. Because we had the good savings in turnover and with our stop loss, we did not have to go to other areas of the budget that we were considering, like equipment line items, travel, recruitment, substitutes, retirement replacements, and actually, all of the staffing that we recommended this year, we, we did review and made a decision that it was appropriate to keep those positions in the budget rather than put them on this list.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Joanne.
Okay, thank you.
I'd just like to congratulate you all on taking what was a tough number. Obviously, helped a lot by the changes in the Internal Services Fund and looking really long and hard and finding ways... long and hard and finding ways to save this, these, these funds. This is, you know, the lack of hard questions you're getting shows what a good job the whole administrative team has done in finding these savings, so, as well as a bit of fortuitous luck with the claims.
Thank you, Penny.
Yeah, I would agree, if I can make a comment. Very impressed with what you were able to do. It's a daunting task, but you were able to make some very smart recommendations, and that all starts with your total control of the numbers. And it's evident here that you really have total control of this budget, so very impressed.
Thank you. Good group effort.
All right. So, we can move on to the Governance Subcommittee update with Mr. Cronin.
Great, thank you. It'll be brief. As you're aware, at our March 6th meeting, we approved the second read of the Series 1000 Community Relations. Since then, the committee has been working on Series 4000, which deals with the policy on personnel, both certified and non-certified. This series contains about 300 pages of existing or suggested policy for review, so it's a bit more sizable than the past couple series that we have reviewed, but we're getting it, through it rather well. The first read of this series, we're hoping to be ready for our July 17th meeting, and we assume the second read will be shortly thereafter, perhaps even the August 21st meeting. As with past series, we'll be inviting the board to the Governance Committee meetings prior to the first read and prior to the second read, so you can add your comments and participate in any of the editing process that takes place. The committee hopes to begin Series 5000 Students, that's entitled Students, in late August. This is one of the largest series. I think it's over 500 pages, so that'll be the good end of the summer read for the Governance Committee. And then, if we're lucky, we'll get through that and grab hold of one of the smaller series and hopefully complete one more series before the calendar year. So, we're making progress.
I wanted to commend Tom on his leadership of this committee. It is, it's a lot of work and, you know, but I think, you know, we've gotten through it in a, in a very organized fashion, and, you know, working with Cave has been, for the most part, pretty...
It has.
Pretty good.
Pretty good, yes.
Pretty good.
Pretty easy.
All right. Does anyone have any questions for Tom? Thank you, Tom. All right. All right. So, moving on to action items, the one item on our action items is the South School Teacher Lounge donation. You have in your packet a, some information about the donation, and if I could get a motion to approve a donation of equipment and labor from Dean, Inc., in the amount of $24,000 for South School that, teacher lounge improvements. Hazel, second.
I'd like to move ahead. I just want to say thank you for such a wonderfully generous donation.
Second. Sangita? Any comments or discussion?
I would like to second that. It is an extraordinarily generous donation by a member of, you know, a local company with, you know, kids in the district, and it's, you know, just so you know, I had emailed both, both Dean children to thank them this weekend, just because it is, it was pretty remarkable to see this donation, so...
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Okay. Thank you, it's unanimous. Moving on to the consent agenda, could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? Penny, second. Jen, all those in favor? All those in favor? Thank you. It's unanimous. And there's no public left, so we will move on to announcements and future business. Dr. Letzey?
Sure. Our next Board of Education meeting will be two weeks from tonight, so June 19th. In the past few years, the second meeting in June has been after graduation, but this year, it's prior to the end of the school year, thanks to the snow and some of the readjustments we've had to do with our schedule. The reception for the senior internship program will be prior to the, to the board meeting at 7:00, at 5:00, right in the auditorium. So, I encourage board members, if you're able to, I know schedules are tight, but if you're able to join us for that, please do. The videos that we saw tonight were created from, by my three interns. Sounds like a sitcom, my three interns. The, but they did a wonderful job, and they've been doing some other work as well, using technology and interviewing folks and creating some videos that we'll use as a district, so it's been great. The Friday, this Friday, we have a celebratory gala here at the high school for that Alan Sneath and the VPA Department has been putting together that is a fundraiser for Saks and for the high school auditoriums. So, I do want to invite all the board members and the public and anyone else who is able to come, to come see the showcase of the talents of our students. We've got some of our youngest performers that'll be there, some of our Saks students, some of our high school students. It really should be a wonderful night. It's being billed as a celebration of the arts, and Mr. Sneath and his department have worked very hard. I know our kids and families have worked hard, too, so I hope that you can join us if, if you have the time. The, at the board's next meeting, we'll be getting our annual update from Model UN. They'll talk to us a bit about how things have gone this year and present to us the calendar for next year. As you know, there are quite a bit of, quite a few trips and overnights that are a part of that, so we'd like to bring that to the board in advance. We'll also have an update on our athletics, the year, a year recap from Mr. Egan, our athletic director. We'll look at enrollment staffing, and we have something called contract signature authorization, which is just the motion to give Dr. Keating and me the authority of the board to enter the Board of Ed into contracts, which we do each year annually. The next day, on Tuesday, we'll have our high school graduation, and then Wednesday, the 21st, will be our last day of school, which is a half-day across the district for everybody. Thank you.
All right. So, if I could get a motion to adjourn to executive session in accordance with Connecticut General Statutes 1-200B, the subject to be discussed is a personnel matter. Sangita, second. Penny, all those in favor? Okay. Adjourn to the executive session.
Thanks, guys.